Just as an FYI, this is a non-disclosure agreement that I'm handing around there for safety precautions that we will use that in that RDA meeting. So if you wouldn't mind filling it out now, we can move even faster.
All right, Shelly, we've got a little deal already to go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'd like to call the order our Riverdale City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. Please let the record show that all city council members are present, as well as members of the city staff and the public. We're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance tonight, be led by Councilor.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Merrill. I have asked Mr. Brooks for his vocation.
Our dear Father in heaven, we humbly bow our heads before thee this evening and give thee thanks for the many blessings which thou has bestowed upon us, but especially we thank thee, Father, for the blessings we have received to live in a free land and to worship as we choose and to follow all those inspired principles that were established by our forefathers. And we recognize thy hand in that and wish to express our gratitude unto thee. Father, we especially thank thee for the opportunity we have to meet here this evening and to discuss the matters and affairs of Riverdale City and the responsibilities that has been laid upon us. And we call upon thee for the guidance in thy spirit to help us to make those decisions and be mindful of the needs of our citizens and our community and our employees, and ask that we be able to make righteous and proper decisions on their behalf. Again, we thank thee, Father, for all that thou has blessed us with, and do so in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. All right, we now have a time for public comment.
We now have a time for public comment. This is an opportunity to address the city council regarding your concerns or ideas. No action will be taken during the public comment. Please try to limit your comments to approximately three minutes. We ask that you state your name and your city of residence if you approach the mic.
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell, and thank you to the council and city staff for letting us be here tonight. My name's Mike Staton, Riverdale resident, former city councillor and planning commissioner. It brings back lots of memories being in here. Some of them are actually good. So I've got some information for you. I emailed this to Mayor Mitchell already, but if you can pass those around, there's a hard copy for each one of the councillors and the mayor here tonight. And feel free to help yourselves to a mountain bike sticker or fridge magnet if you would like. They are last year's stickers, so they have no financial value. You don't have to report them on anything. So it has been, let's see, it's been eight years now since the pump track here in Riverdale was constructed. It was formerly a BMX jump situation. Mayor Mitchell and Councillor Arnold were on the council with me at the time, and I hope they'll forgive me for jogging their memory as I relate a little bit of the history. But the first page in this packet is the concept plan that I brought to the council, proposing that we make it into something more fun and more safe than what was there. And there were concerns. One of the first concerns was, would this actually get used by Riverdale residents? Another concern was, would there be community support? Because I needed a little bit of money to build it. Another concern was, what about maintenance? And then, of course, risk and risk management is always a concern to the city attorney particularly, but also to the council mayor. So the agreement that came out of that first council meeting when I brought it up was that if we could fundraise to show community support, the city would match dollar per dollar. And if I could come up with $6,000, we could build it. The next page shows somewhat what I think the first impression was that I think the mayor and the council and the attorney had was that we were going to build something big and crazy like what you see here. These are bike parks in Draper City, Park City, and Salt Lake City that have big jumps and advanced features. I have written the easy lines in each one of those, and I'm a pretty experienced mountain biker, and there's stuff there that I don't want to do, and not for no good reason. There is a lot of what we call elevated risk there that's not necessary to enjoy being on the bike. And this was not what we built and not what we were proposing, but it took a little bit of convincing explanation to see that. The next page shows what the internationally accepted design guidelines for mountain bike facilities by the International Mountain Bike Trail Association. So what we promised and what we fulfilled with the pump track was to build an easy or beginner level feature or park. To mitigate risk, we would stick to the standards of at least three feet of width of the trail, nothing that was an unavoidable obstacle taller than two inches, and a few other criteria that you'll see there. So I was pleased to be validated by the community response. We began our fundraising and we had our funds within a week or two. And we went from there with meeting all of the conditions and requirements that were needed for the city to match those funds. And through volunteer labor, including Sick Eagle Scout projects, we built the pump track, the fence, the sign, the shed, and had our grand opening in May of 2015, so eight years ago. So there's a nice picture of Mayor Searle and Councillor Ellis and me there as we cut the ribbon and opened it up to these very excited kids. It's been a lot of fun. We had the Road Respect Rally there in 2015, which is a Department of Transportation and Department of Health cooperative thing to raise awareness of cycling and road safety. And if you come down there on a walk in the evening, in the summertime, or spring, fall, pretty much any time when it isn't this kind of crazy weather, you'll see kids down there on their bikes. And you'll see adults down there on their bikes, too. I love the picture on this page of the guy with the beard with the infant seat on the back of his bike. It really is a facility for all ability levels. It's a great place to practice. It's a great place to learn. And it was one of the things I was most proud of as I stepped down from the council in 2016 and took on a few other roles. One of those roles being a coach for Bonneville Mountain Bike Team. And after two years, I was the head coach. So this will be my eighth year coaching with the team. I absolutely love it. It is a lot of work, but as with the council, things that are a lot of work are also the most works. And I have coached over 150 kids. We had 70 kids and 30 coaches on our team last year and promise of a larger team this year. One of the most meaningful experiences I had, we had a girl on our team who came from a very difficult situation with a challenging family and horrible abuse she had been through, and told me a few months later, after she had joined the team, as the conversation went around the first day of school, what do you do, you know, so and so. It came to her, and she said, I don't do anything. Wait, yes, I do. I'm a mountain biker. And she told me that having this team and this program to belong to literally saved her life when she was in the darkest time of her life. And I've had other people tell me other equally meaningful and moving stories. We love what we do. You can see the picture from the first year I was there. You can see the picture from last year, and we have so many people involved. If you look closely, you'll recognize a lot of faces from Riverdale. One of the things we focus on the team is inclusivity. We have our five core principles, and inclusivity is one of the most important to me because I wish I had had something like this to belong to as a team. And we really want to include everybody. Anybody can mountain bike regardless of the skill level. As soon as those training wheels come off and you finish your sixth grade year, you can sign up, and we'll have a blast. One of the things we do, you can see, community is also one of our principles. We serve the greater community, especially the mountain bike community, but also the community at large. And we have, as a team, been at the bike park at least once a year, providing an annual or more often dig day to make sure that everything is up to its original spec, that the trails are flowing, that we've cleaned up any sort of, anything that needs to be cleaned up, and everything's shaped right. And the city has very helpfully provided a few loads of dirt from time to time as we've needed more, as things have settled, or we needed more to shape things. We come back during the summer, and we pull these nasty little weeds with the yellow flowers that like to hurt your dog's paws and pop your tires. If you pick up puncture vines, you're not doing it at the bike park, unless you happen to be, well, across the street. We'll come to that in a minute. So every year, we start out in May with some beginning skills clinics where we teach the kids, we fill their toolbox full of the things that they need in order to be comfortable when they head out onto the trails. So there's the list there on the right, how to separate your body from the bike, how to turn, how to brake. And most of this we have achieved in the grass and the pump track every year. And it's our first go-to place for our first couple of skills clinics. The one thing that has always been on my wish list that we don't have is how to handle bumpy terrain like rocks and roots. We have these great rollers, we have these great berms, but we don't have any bumpy terrain at all. And so we'll get kids out on the mountain bike trails, and they'll come into some rocks and they'll freeze up. And we need to get them through that by giving them the equivalent of training wheels, but to be able to hit some easy rock features and some easy bumps. And that is the one feature that our bike park could really use. So this next page just shows a few examples of some features, especially the bottom picture. That's the Bridger Bike Park in Logan. There are a couple of jump features there that we're not proposing here, but I want to draw your attention to the foreground where you see the rocks and you see those little tiny ledges where the kids are standing by their bikes. Those are about six inches high, where you ride off of that ledge and experience a little bump, about like riding off the curb out into the street, minus the cars. So what I would like to propose is, in the same way that I have been managing the bike park, I would fill this same role as a volunteer bike park manager on behalf of the city, to construct a skills feature or skills loop or double loop, I guess, in the space that is between the restrooms and the parking lot entrance, between the parking lot and the adjacent street. There's enough room there to build a small figure-eight loop with a starting mound, and the one side would be purely beginner level with no more than two inches thick or high rocks to ride through, and with a bypass lane. So not only is it beginner level, but it also has the bypass lane. The other side would have a more intermediate level up to six or eight inches for some of these rocks, but also, again, with a bypass lane so that it would still meet the IMB requirements for an easy path with blue level features. So what I would need from the city to do this would be the space and the permission to use it. I talked to Mayor Mitchell about this last week, and he thought it would be good for me to explain it to the council, so that's why I'm here. The mountain bike team would love to come build this for you guys, and we could bring in some other mountain bike teams and other volunteers as well, just like we did before with the pump track. If I had my, you know, may as well ask for the bee's knees. If I had it, I'd love a few loads of dirt. I'd love some tree trunks that we can modify to make some of these flat wood features. And if we had the rails for a rail fence like you have along the path, we'd be happy to install that, too, or if there's any other conditions the council wanted to attach. But this is our offer. We'd love to build this for the city if you'll just give us the space and the permission, basically. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. If you would like to speak with these members of the mountain bike team, we have Bailey and Monte Ward, their dad, who's one of my coaches. We have Eliza Waters, and then, of course, Lucas Staton and Nick Staton. All of these kids can tell you how they got their start riding here on the pump track. Do you have any questions for me?
You know how open communications is. We don't usually do a lot of interacting, but thank you, Mr. Staton. And I can attest that there's some people in my neighborhood, and there's a young man that has had a great experience on your team, and he's one of those guys, you know, and that probably would have a hard time fitting in. And so anyway, and it doesn't seem like you're asking for very much. And so, anyway, hopefully the council, we can discuss it and see what we can come up with for you. But do you have any questions?
I have one as well, in my.
Oh, okay, yeah. And regardless of what happens with this, you're doing a great job.
Thank you. We are available May 6th if you guys would like us to do that work. I know it's fast, but I think we can.
If you come up with a plan to keep the RCs out.
I would love to keep the RCs out. Unfortunately, people don't pay attention to the sign that does say they're not allowed, so it becomes a matter of enforcement at that point. But this new feature with the rocks is not RC car friendly, so RCs need a smoother track for that, for what it's worth. And then another idea we had was to build a even easier pump track area behind the picnic area for these kids on strider bikes that want like a hill that's this high or whatever. We'd love to make that for you, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
What does it take? I mean, that one's a pretty small one.
It's pretty small, yeah. I think it would just, I mean, it would just take the council's okay.
Well, yeah, but.
We have to put it on an agenda.
Right. It works. We'll discuss it.
If we don't do any money, we don't have, it's a smaller project.
Right, but still the use of city property, so we still got to jump through those same hopes and stuff. We'll talk about it a little bit further. I'll meet with Sean tomorrow, maybe if we get some time, and see what we can come up with. And then we'll get back with Mike and try to get this, we'll look at it.
The only hesitance that I think, well, one of the things that would make us hesitate is it's a maintenance item, and it's something that has to be maintained. And our public works is already stretched pretty thin, and we hate to add too much to those guys.
For what it's worth, the only maintenance we would even expect from the public works would be what they have always done, which is just weed eating in that area. Everything else, it pretty much takes care of itself, other than these annual dig days that I have no intention of quitting anytime soon. I have deep roots here, and also deep roots in the mountain biking community.
Very good. Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Natalie Allgood, and I'm a resident here in Riverdale City. My husband and his family has been residents for a very long time, so you probably know Doris and Robert and Richard Allgood. Anyways, one thing I wanted to come, I have been in contact with, Saratoga Springs has a new all abilities park, as well as, I don't know if you've ever been to Flaming Gorge, or not Flaming Gorge, St. George, and had your kids play at the all abilities park down there. And I noticed that part of our park is not even usable because it used to have one of those runners, and I guess it became an issue of safety. So in talking with, so a little bit of background, I have a son, and he's seven years old, and he has Down Syndrome and autism. And with him, we've been able to get to know a lot of families here in Riverdale who have children with disabilities, including several who are in wheelchairs and cannot enjoy our park. So that's what kind of has driven this passion for me. So in talking with Saratoga Springs and with St. George and some of their council members, they informed me that most of the park was actually grant-based, and they got tons of scholarships from the businesses around them to pay for the majority of the park. So of course, the part that was not able to be funded, most of it was in the architectural piece of it, in the digging. And so it would be great, though, to see how we can pull together as a community to utilize some of that space we have at the park a little bit better, to come together and pull together an all abilities park, because we definitely have the space there at the park. And especially with both of where the parks are, being able to just make that area a little bit more friendly for those who have special needs. I did print off, I did find several lists of grants that are given. Some are national, and then others are actually state level, and then some would be actually businesses that we have here in Riverdale and in Ogden. So I just wanted to leave this list and just have it there for something to consider. I know this year, there's a huge focus on the flood, but, you know, for the years to come, just, I was way excited when we got, when one of our residents took on getting the swing, and that has been utilized tremendously by some of our families. So that's been super exciting. But just to be able, in the future, to go a step further and really think about our children who have special needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Arnold.
There's, Sean, maybe you know about this, Perkinwith Weaver School District. Weren't they talking about putting in a park like that when we were talking about putting it over behind Sam's Club? Because I remember going to the Christmas Tree Jubilee, they were talking about the main focus was to get the money for these types of parks. And I remembered specifically talking to somebody about one coming to Riverdale, but they didn't know. Have you heard anything about that?
I have not heard anything on all abilities from somebody else or from the school district.
I remember the school district talking about it. The Christmas Tree Jubilee is for the school district. And so I know that's on their radar, so we can see if we can talk to them. And I'll take that on and contact some people and see where that's at, because I'm pretty sure they were, they were going to put five of them in the county.
Even the park that's at Riverdale School right now is totally funded by Riverdale City. They don't even participate in maintenance or funding on.
That's Riverdale property. That's not school property.
No, that's all funded, you know, the council funded that. The playground there that they use every day for the school, that's all Riverdale City funded. There is some all ability, there is some access up there for wheelchair things. I don't know if you've used that one.
It's a small ramp. That's there.
Are you talking about the lower?
I'm talking about the lower one. Yeah, because I know I've talked to Mayor Mitchell before about going in and getting a group to sanitize it, because the slides are actually really disgusting. And you can see the dirt and grime when it hits the sun. But then my son ended up hospitalized when we were going to do it. And so, but yeah, there's just that, I mean, part of it can't even be used by the kids. The kids kind of hang on that pipe right now and stuff. But I know in talking with Saratoga and with St. George, they both said how much it has helped the businesses around, too, to also bring people from outside of the city to come in, and how they've had an increase of sales due to just having the park there. So I think that would be a great, you know, sales point for some of our businesses in this area. And we've gotten lots of new ones, and they've been great. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll now move on to the presentations and reports portion of our agenda. For the mayor's report, we wanted to talk about the flooding and our preparations just a little bit. I really should probably just turn the time over to Mr. Douglas, because he, I mean, he and I talk a lot, but he could probably explain. I'll leave some of the stuff out. So if you just want to give us kind of an update of where we're at.
So naturally, we've been watching that fairly close. We started about three weeks ago cleaning the channel that goes out of River Glen. We brought heavy equipment in. We cleaned that all the way to the river, pretty much. We left a little bit at the natural end just for cleanup, because we use the wetlands as part of our cleanup for our stormwater. So the very last little bit is not clean. So if anybody asks you, that's why we're still using that for cleanup. But we did clean out the diversion channel that comes off of the main channel for overflow. So if that wetland area does plug up, it has a direct shot to the river. It's just a little bit higher level, so until we get a high flow, the water doesn't flow there, but we did clean that area up. We've also been down and operated all the gates down there on the diversion head for the stormwater. So they're all in good working order. We also backed all that area out. We've taken our main electric pump down with the generator and test ran it last week, so everything operated well on it. Made sure the harnesses and everything worked on that. I mean, I can't guarantee next time we go down, it's a mechanical item, but everything worked well when we was down there. Since then, so Monday, with the fire department, we went down and put the plastic barrier over the existing retaining wall that we built down there, the dirt berm that we built last time. We took roughly 100, we had about 100 bags filled by the first group of volunteers that we kind of tested our volunteer system out with. We took all of them bags, about 100, 150 down with the fire department, placed that visqueen wall in. And then yesterday, while, after we did that, we came back and our department bagged about 100, additional 100, 150 bags. We then took them down on the trail and placed them on the trail, covered them so that we have quick access to them without really doing any transportation. We also have the trail closed signs and that down there ready to deploy if we get to that point. Then we came back and got with Rich, and he used his new system or the city's new system that Rich is kind of running for us to bring volunteers out. We brought in 20 plus, Rich?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three volunteers yesterday afternoon on pretty short notice and filled, we're estimating, but we estimated they filled about another 570 bags yesterday. And we have all them palletized and put inside the public works building back there, so we're keeping them dry. But they're on pallets so that we can just grab them with the forklift and roughly deploy, you know, between 35 to 50 bags per pallet, just by picking them up and hauling them out. We don't have to fill anything. And then we've also pretty much filled all of our sand piles. We have some sand down in Cottonwood. I think we have two or three loads of sand down in Cottonwood. I think we also put some by the Sanders Brine Shrimp, so that we have sand there that we can just take bags to deploy that. Then we also went along the river and kind of identified the areas in the past. It's been our first trouble areas, and we're working on putting a map together there so that whoever responds knows which areas to look at first. And to back up a little bit, we also, at the start of this, bought an additional 24,000 empty sandbags, which we have on pallets inside the building. And we felt like we had roughly 7,000 to 10,000 bags already on hand, so it was over 30,000 empty bags. And we've talked a lot internally. It's been, you know, the stuff Rich has worked on, I think, is going to work really well because it's a system that we can deploy quickly. It's something that he's already using, so it wasn't a brand-new how to learn how to do it. And as always, I mean, like, I know yesterday, everybody's like, well, I don't know if you'll get anybody. It's the middle of the day, but you send it out to Riverdale residents, they show up. And we didn't send it out like we're in dire need. We're like, if you can come. Some came for an hour or something and left, and then another couple showed up or whatever. But they usually respond really well. And I know if we would have sent it out that we had flooding, we would have had a way bigger response. But it was just comforting to know that we have bags there. We don't have to wait for it to happen. We can respond fairly quickly. And then we've been watching the water levels. We can't, our main two gauges are at Uena, and the main gauge is up at Gateway, which is at the mouth of the, where the canyon goes out at Mountain Green. And we watch them every day. And like today, we dropped about four or five inches in the afternoon. Their prediction for the rest of the week's pretty steady compared to what we was today, but it's just a prediction. I mean, if we go to 80 instead of the 60 they're predicting, that's going to change stuff. If we get rain, that's going to change stuff. We have a ton of lower elevation snow, and that's concerning because that stuff can, it can really bite you. The upstream dams, they've been dropping. East Canyon Echo, Rockport, Lost Creek's been staying pretty steady, but it's really low, so I don't think they really need to drop it anymore. And so pretty much everything upstream of us, you'd watched all winter as they're trying to gain ground, because like naturally, we're in a drought. We've been fighting water. They was gaining ground, and the last month, they've just went and dived them. So I think we've done everything we can. We just need to stay on top of it now and hope we have a decent amount. And I don't know if you have any questions or concerns or... I mean, we're just trying to stand in front of it.
He's being humble, too.
Chief Shelley's been going to the emergency manage meetings. I know there's been a lot of stuff moving in the county. But sometimes they promise us stuff and don't happen, so we kind of just wanted to step out and make sure that we were prepared as much as we can be. But I don't know.
You guys all know how the system works, how to get signed up for it?
I somehow missed that one.
Nope.
Okay. So you text the word emergency to 801-621-6084.
Yeah.
And then you're enrolled. You're on the text. And they do want you to fill out a Google form so we can track the volunteers and their hours and stuff. Need that again, Bart, that number. 801-621-6084. they do want you to fill out a Google form so we can track the volunteers and their hours and stuff. Need that again, Bart, that number, eight oh one, six two one, six zero eight four. And you just text emergency and, uh, and then you're in, you'll at least get the text, right?
Yeah. Right before the meeting, I checked, we have a hundred and four people that have subscribed to it. And then Michelle and I are getting together because she has those Google forms. So when you subscribe, it'll subscribe you and then it'll kick you a link to a Google form. Um, and we're making sure, cause there's a lot of people filling out a Google form that aren't subscribing. So I'm grabbing them in if they fill out the form. And so I manually update that every so often. But we, right before the meeting, we had a hundred and four people that if I broadcast a text, it's going to a hundred and four people.
Mr. Brooks, were you going to say something?
Well, I was just going to add to that. Um, Sean's kind of a nice humble guy, but it's not just the water that they're watching. These guys are all over the place and um, just earlier this week when we had that windstorm that one night, we lost a number of trees and different things. One of those fell on our bridge right out here. Those guys are all over the place. I mean, they're cutting that thing down because it's going to get in the river. That's going to block stuff. I mean, it's just been amazing what they've been doing. And you throw that up on top of all the snow plowing they've done. I mean, it's just been a phenomenal year for those guys as far as work goes, but kudos to Sean. We also met Sean and these guys, he, he pulled these crews in, even the ones who had days off. It was like, no, well, that's not an option this week. Cause we're going to have to split you up, you know, uh, snow plowing is going to be half of you. The other half can be doing flooding things. So it's just been crazy, but we did meet up on, uh, last week with the state geologist too, in addition to this with Sean and Mayor Mitchell was there just to take a look at the hillside as well. They'll be getting a report back to us. He didn't seem too concerned, not as bad as I thought it was going to be. Um, they still have those monitoring wells up there. They're going to get us some data on that and get us a report on that thing. The one part of that slide has kind of, I don't know that stabilized, but it's not as steep as I remembered it being a few years ago. The one closest to the house is still fairly steep, but we'll get an update on that one too. But he, he felt overall that we won't see issues there until the fall, most likely. But we'll still keep an eye on that. Randy's, um, looking at that every day and taking shots and different things. So we're trying to cover all of our bases when and where we can. And like Sean said, it's just all weather dependent. We just don't know. But I think they're as prepared as they could be. And then with Rich and, and Chief Shally and stuff, they're, they're on top of things. So I think we're in good hands. I, I know people get frustrated and they think we should be doing all these sandbags. One of the reasons we don't, I explained this the other night when we were out there, when the, those guys were out there bagging is these things are designed to deteriorate. And so if you do a whole bunch of them, they may just go to waste. And you know, then we're going to have a pallet of sand kind of thing. So you almost have to wait until you actually need it before we can get going on them. So we, we're not going to do huge amounts until we know what we're going to need. And then, uh, I mean, they've done everything they can. They got the piles there waiting. And the second we need them, then we'll, 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 you know, turn everything on and off we go. So.
We do, we have close to 20 loads of sand right now that we've, that's not our using sand that we use on a daily basis. We've just specified it for the floods. You know, we've tried to get a sand that works in the bags fairly good. The biggest thing we're having trouble with that right now is everything's wet. So when we haul the sand, it's wet, which makes it sticky. So it doesn't feel as wet. We're trying to keep it on our building as much as we can to try and get it dried out. Um, and the other thing I think to stress is if your neighbors not ask you, they should be doing stuff to protect their area because we're going to try and protect the city on the edges. But their personal residents, you know, they need to be doing stuff to, to take care of that. And the other thing with the volunteers is we've had this happen to us in the past. It really bites us. We have a great turnout for volunteers, but they don't go through the process. They don't sign up and they don't check out. And then if it gets to an event where we're going to get funding back, we get no credit for all these great volunteers we have. So stress to them that please go through the process. Rich is doing a great job of tracking that. And if we, if something gets really bad and we get, and then there's funding comes in, we'll get credit back for all them hours that are logged if they check in and check out. But in the past, you know, they're so good to show up, but they're like, oh, we're done. We're leaving. We didn't check out. And then the feds are like, okay, there's no credit there. They signed in, but they wasn't there because they didn't check out. Well, so they'll be able to do that online, right, Rich?
Yeah. So we, we haven't set up that, uh, what we're hoping is obviously you check in, check out on the site, right? Uh, but we know that there's going to be a fair number of that. That's why we're collecting the contact information so that we can go on the backend and contact those individuals that we, that we don't have a checkout time for and get one after the fact. We're also doing a wristband system that, uh, when you check in to a volunteer event, we're going to give you a wristband. And we're going to instruct the volunteers, there's going to be a little kiosk, A, A-frame signs that at the very least, okay, just scribble down the time you're leaving, cut your wristband and put it in the box. And we'll have that wristband that we can track it back to you and we can log it that way. Another thing is you can text that same phone number and just say, hey, I'm leaving. And we've got your contact information in the system. So I can go back through, uh, we're, we, I think we have five or six different ways to track when people log out. We're trying to make it as simple as possible. Cause after people get done, that's the last thing they want to do is have to stand in line and check out. So I guess we won't know until it happens, but we're trying to think of everything.
I hope you guys get a sense of how much is going on. I mean, everybody is pulling as hard as they can and we're going to need a little bit of luck. I mean, honestly, there's some things that are outside of our control, but I mean, I feel a tremendous responsibility to make sure that we do every single thing. And, and I'll just tell you kind of a funny story from yesterday. So, um, I got the texts, they're volunteering from one to four. That's bad. You know what I mean? For people that are working stuff. And anyway, um, and I was, I talked to Sean a couple of times yesterday, you know, and he's telling me what's going on. And then Chief Shali called me from Mexico on his vacation, told me, told me kind of the same stuff, Sean, then they told me some other stuff, said they reached out to the county. Now the county had told us that they had a bunch of filled sandbags. He asked him, uh, we don't got no sandbags. Like we got nothing. They said they had pumps. Oh, we got nothing for you. Sorry. You know, so we are not going to depend on the county for any of this, but I mean, Rich has been working so hard and these guys, and then, then I called Rich. I said, hey, how many volunteers showed up? And they were going to do it from one to four. Were you done by about two 30? I think.
Yeah. The last person checked out at two 40.
Two 40, they'd filled like 600 sandbags and they're like, okay, stop. We don't have any more room for sandbags. So, I mean, and that was a like, like we said, it wasn't even a, hey, it's an emergency, get down here. We need help. So I, I have full faith in the residents that if we have a problem that we can, we can just turn them out and fill probably 10,000 sandbags, you know?
And one last thing, if I could, because I know you're getting asked or you will get asked, and it's on the, the Riverdale citizens page. We, we don't plan on selling them. We don't plan on giving any away. I mean, our first priority is keeping them in-house. So we can use them where we need them. Most of the people that have called here at the civic center and want them, they're in higher areas. They're not coming from Steve's neighborhood or Braden's neighborhood that would, should be nervous. We've even had a call from the bench and it's like, you, you don't need sandbags. You're okay. We're not going to provide those for you. We've got to keep them here. I mean, if it came time and we had to for somebody who really needed it, then we could maybe do something, but for now we're not, that's not an option. Just so you know, I mean, we got to, we got to save it for the city first. That's our first priority. And people like the sand, Sean was telling us today, some of them, they like it for their sandboxes. So they'll grab their sandbags and things like that. And these things aren't going to last either. So, um, it's just a temporary thing, but we need it for the main purpose first. So.
We had another one that lives in Riverdale, but they have a place up in the canyon. They wanted to come and get the Riverdale sandbags to bag the canyon. And it's like, no, we don't. We're keeping them in-house for now.
It really is a limited resource and, and there was, I, I don't know if you guys saw, but there was a lady I was communicating with or some residents online. And I actually looked up her address because I wasn't sure where it was and, and it is well inland like, uh, but it, it might be her first year or first flood, you know, and she's just nervous and wants to get those 30 bags around her house or whatever, but those would be much better served, you know, behind the, the brine shrimp, you know.
Right. If it's a high water table, those sandbags are going to do nothing for them. Whereas down on the river, it could, it could shift some water. So.
And if everybody gets antsy and is like, I want to get my house ringed with sandbags. That's really not what we're going for. We're going for, let's keep it in the banks, you know, and protect all the houses. So.
If you guys hear stuff too, we don't hear everything. Keep us informed, you know, we'll try and respond to it. We're, we're responding to the ones that we hear about, but I know you guys get hit with all different stuff that we don't. And maybe we haven't even seen it or noticed it. So just let us know what you're hearing.
Speaker Parsons is selling sandbags as well. Cause.
They're actually giving them out for free.
But they're gone.
They're not now?
They're gone. They said they have run out.
Everyone's are gone.
A resident tell me, I called the city. They said, no, they suck. So I had to go to Speaker Parsons and get them myself. I'm like,
I did reach out to Home Depot yesterday because I was a little bit, when people were looking, I'd heard a rumor that Home Depot was doing something. They acted like they'd never heard that we, didn't even know we're having a flood. And, uh, I said, well, let me just give you a little heads up. In 2011, they had piles of sand and bags there and the residents could just go fill them. I said, you might want to talk to some of your management and let them know, we're getting ready to have a giant flood down here. And it kind of builds a little goodwill. If, you know what I mean? If, if you're ready to chip in on that and.
So I think the chief had been over and talked to them too.
He got donated shovels and gloves.
Yeah. That's why I thought that seems that's, that's a surprise to him because he's been over communicating with them.
And I, I went up the chain, one person, you know, not just the phone answer. And they were just kind of like, oh, I don't, I don't know of anything. I don't think we have any sandbags. I don't know anything about it. So. Anyway, just, just know and, and reach out to these guys or reach out to, reach out to probably route everything through Mr. Brooks. And, uh, if you have questions and he can tell you the latest, um, but just know they're, they're going gangbusters and it's, it's something that we think about and talk about all the time. So.
Last thing, I just signed up.
Oh, good. It's pretty easy.
Well, Steve was talking. I don't, I don't know what you said, but.
Bring your gloves.
Bring your gloves. That's right. Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Douglas for that update. Let's move on to, uh, presentation number two. Uh, we have a representative here from the Utah Jazz, um, Rich and the, and, and, uh, the gentleman in the purple, if you want to come on up. Looks like he has something to do with the Jazz.
Well, thanks for letting me take a couple of minutes. I know Rich promised you players Orion Smith, and I'm definitely not that. So. My name is Nate Martinez. I oversee all of our youth programming for the Jazz. And so everything from junior jazz to our camps and clinics, to kids club, to everything we're doing on the youth front. So through the course of a year, we have the opportunity with about 95,000 kids around the state, which is, is a fun job and a fun opportunity. But obviously the crown jewel of what we do youth wise is junior jazz. This past, this season, we're, we're finishing right now is the 40th year of junior jazz. So 1983, we started and we'll hit over 2 million kids that have gone through the program over the course of those 40 years. So super exciting to, to hit that benchmark. It's been fun to see the, the commitment of the Miller family and now with Ryan Smith and his wife, as far as commitment to the community and to the junior jazz program. And it's been fun to see how so many kids go through it and have positive experiences in basketball through the program. As part of junior jazz, um, we do our best to recognize some of our, our partners. We work with over a hundred different parks and rec departments, not only in Utah, but Nevada, Wyoming, Idaho, Arizona, and Montana. And so, yeah, we, we work with a bunch of groups and every year we pick some of the best ones to recognize and to try to highlight the good work that they're doing in the communities. And, um, we started a program to recognize a specific person in different departments, probably 15 years ago. And, uh, we called our, our, our junior jazz director of the year. And Rich actually won that award when he's in Farmington, um, and it was, was recognized there. And we have kind of adapted it a little bit now to be more of a department of the year. So we pick one of our 100 partners each year and recognize them as our junior jazz, uh, program of the year. And for the 22, 23 season, that partner of the year is Riverdale City. And so we are, we're super thankful for everything that, that Rich and Bailey do to support what we're doing within, within the junior jazz program. And we have a lot of different things that are, that are optional places to be involved from a shooting competition called Fun Shot to our sportsmanship program called Lead Together to our referee trainings, to our coach trainings, to all these different things that we do. And, um, trying to provide as many resources as possible, um, through the Jazz. And it's, we love doing it, but sometimes it does get a little frustrating that we don't get more buy-in and support from our partners to come participate in all this stuff that we're trying to offer. And I'll say that Rich has been great in not only coming himself, but bringing his staff, right? Like there, we had referees at the referee training at the arena. We had coaches that were coming to our coaches training. And so he's always been great over the years. I worked with him to not only support what we're doing and try to take advantage of the programs we're offering. But also at the same time to be a sounding board on what he needs in his community and what other communities could use as well. We have a board of directors of our probably top 10 programs that we've had for, for several years. And Rich was on it in Farmington. He's on it now in Riverdale. And so I really appreciated him over the years to be able to say, hey, this is what we really need, right? From the Jazz perspective, from my seat, we don't see what the needs really are, um, on a day-to-day basis in the different cities and communities. And so depending on that group to really fill us in and let us know what is needed has been super critical. And Rich has always been really, really helpful to give us good feedback there. And let us know what, what, what he needs and what different programs need around the state. As part of the award, um, we have recognized them. This is the second recognition that we've been able to do. Um, Bailey was able to come down to our lead together celebration a couple of weeks ago at the arena where we recognized her along with some different kids and coaches and officials and different pieces of the junior jazz program. They got to meet Walker Kessler, get some autographs, take some pictures, different things like that and get recognized there. Obviously the opportunity to come speak with you guys tonight. And then this Saturday, um, at the final jazz game of the season, we'll also have another presentation um, in front of all of our junior jazz partners before the jazz game at, at Vivint Arena. And the things that we're able to provide as part of this award, uh, are number one, a $2,500 grant, um, to Riverdale City and the recreation department for whatever they need, training, supplies, whatever, whatever, whatever is most helpful for, for Rich and his department. And so we'll present that check to him on, on Saturday. Um, second, we'll provide some, some free jazz tickets for staff and, and volunteers to be able to attend a jazz game as another thank you and, and, um, part of the award. And then the third and final piece that we wanted to bring and donate tonight is a autographed basketball by the 22, 23 Jazz team. And so I'd love to present that to Rich and, uh, thank him for his support. Thank you all for your support of the Jazz and the junior jazz program. And, uh, it really is the communities that make it go. Uh, we try to, to be the, the support arm, but without the people on the ground that are really running it and providing these great experiences for youth, it really wouldn't be what it is. So thank you to you all for, for your support of junior jazz, of the Jazz organization overall. And if there are things we can do for the city, please let us know. We'd love to help in other ways. If there's other ways that are helpful to you, please let us know. And, uh, again, just appreciate the time, appreciate the partnership, appreciate Bailey and appreciate Rich for all he does for the Jazz and for the junior jazz program. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Hey Steve, let's get, let's get a picture so we can put that up on the website or something. Uh, yeah.
I, I have a picture from last, or two weeks ago with Bailey and Walker Kessler.
Okay.
I've been holding on to it until after tonight.
Okay.
Put them up together.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Get that autograph ball in there and, uh, and we got to get these guys some recognition on the city page. So. Turn those autographs down a little bit. Okay, we're good.
Whoever can tell who everybody's on that ball gets another prize. They sign very legibly on those things. They sign like 400 of them.
Yeah.
But again, thank you so much and appreciate.
Yeah. Thanks for coming. All right. That's fantastic. Congratulations, Rich. Um, it sounds like you're on that board and you play a big role with those guys. So great job. Um, all right. Move on to item number three, city council assignment reports. Does anybody have anything to report from their assignments? Okay. Seeing none, that makes that easy. We'll move into, uh, item F consent items. We'll do these separately. We'll start with the first one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the March 21st, 2023 council work session and, and council meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to these minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order. Move a motion and a second. Ms. Nate, will you please poll the council? No, actually we do this, just all in favor say yes. Okay. Any opposed? All right. That passes unanimously. Consent item number two, if we could have Mr. Poulsen come up here, please. Come up to the microphone. So this is Randy Poulsen. Uh, Mike, do you want me to introduce him or? Okay. So, um, so as, as we talked about, we have, uh, an opening on our planning commission and I had the opportunity last week to interview a couple of really well-qualified candidates. Um, I had a couple of really good questions, um, that I'd put together and we went through them. And, uh, you know, I, I know Randy a little bit. I know well of him more than I actually knew him. But I spent some time over at his house and I got to know him a little bit better. He's lived in Riverdale for 40 years.
Two months will be 40 years.
40 years, um, raised his family here. Um, he, uh, he's got a pretty extensive work background. But the last, uh, maybe seven to eight years, he's been kind of the real estate.
Real estate agent and my son, you've probably heard of Nathan Poulsen, the Poulsen team. That's my son.
That's his son and, and, uh, he has a pretty good background in land use and some of that kind of stuff and understanding of some of how that's going to fit into the city. And, uh, you know, I actually had a couple of really good candidates, like I said, and, and I just felt like Randy was the best one for, for the job. And so I would, uh, ask for your advice and consent in approving Randy to serve out the remainder of Blair Jones' term on the planning commission. All in favor, say yes. Any opposed? All right. There we go. You're confirmed.
Thank you. Just want to say thanks to everybody. Look forward to working with you. And Poulsen name in Riverdale kind of synonymous, isn't it?
Yeah.
For good or bad.
You're Leon Poulsen's cousin?
Yes. No, no. It's the way it works is Leon and me were related to our great grandfather, James Poulsen, who was a Mormon pioneer. It's the way it works is Leon and me were related to our great grandfather, James Poulsen, who was a Mormon pioneer. We have different great grandmothers, so we come from the polygamous side. My wife asked me, why are you, would you ever consider polygamy? And I said, no, I can only deal with one lady at a time. So anyway, that's how we, I went to Bonneville High School, graduated together in 1975. So my roots, I grew up in the bottom end of Washington Terrace. 20 years up in the bottom of the terrace and then I moved to here and got married. My wife is kind of disabled, uh, just to let you, you want to know a little about me is, you guys want to know a little about that?
Sure, history.
My wife's from England. I served a mission in England way back in 76. I didn't meet her there, um, but she came over here. She's, she was very athletic. She was a black belt in karate, taught karate. She taught soccer for Hill Air Force Base where she currently is a staffer at Hill Air Force Base. And all of a sudden she got into massive car accident on I-15 about 20 years ago. Young kids unfortunately was texting on their phone and rear ended her at 40 miles an hour on I-15, 215 interchange, changed her life forever. She's had two bicoclear implants and she now uses a walker pretty much. She's still mentally stable. She's wrote four books. She went back to Weber State at 45 and got three degrees in human resources, business and financing. And she literally almost has a photographic memory. And to see her today, you know, is sad, but that's my wife. Two boys, 10 years apart. Nathan is our oldest son. He turns 40, youngest son's today's 30th birthday. He works out at Northrop Grumman and that's kind of my family, my history.
Fantastic. You can see he's got, he's got a good background for us. So we're excited to see what you do on the planning. Thanks, Randy.
Have you read the book about James Poulsen?
I have, I've got the book, yeah. Have you read it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, it's kind of funny. Can I tell you a real quick story about that? It's kind of funny is he's, he's buried up in Liberty, Idaho, his, his homestead up there where he, Charles C. Rich and Brigham Young asked him to go and settle Bear Lake. That's where my roots are from. And he's buried there with three women. And so my mother-in-law from England came over and she says, oh, this guy sure had bad luck. Three women here, not knowing his background or anything. So, and I had to explain it to her. Anyway, it was kind of funny. So my family originates from Bear Lake, Idaho. We own probably about 700 acres of Bear Lake raspberries at one time when my aunt and uncle was alive. Where Sweetwater is was all the raspberry patches up there. And so that's where my family come. And now from polygamy side, I've got cousins that I don't even know. They're all over.
Well, thank you, Randy. Thanks for being willing to serve. We appreciate that and you have a great night and you're welcome to stay and watch the, the meeting. So that's great.
James Poulsen's name is on the tabernacle in Paris.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, he was one of the builders of the tabernacle in Paris.
Cool. That's great. Okay.
I knew him, I didn't know you. I knew him, I didn't know you.
You knew James?
Well, I didn't know him personally.
All right, very good. We'll move on to the action items. Number one, consideration of resolution 2023-15 approving the 2023 annual wastewater report. Mr. Douglas.
Thanks, Mayor. So we talked about it a little before. It's just the annual report. State requires us to do it. The highlight of it, in my opinion, is that we didn't have any significant incidents. We didn't have any backups, spills, anything that was caused by the city again this year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Okay, Council Arnold.
Move to approve resolution 2023-15.
Give a motion and a second. Ms. Nay, will you please poll the council?
Yes.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Stevens?
Yes.
Council Hanson?
Yes.
Councilor Hopp?
Yes.
All right, very good. That passes unanimously and it's good to see that Ms. Nay remembers how to do that from her time as our recorder. Very good. We're glad you're here to fill in, by the way. It's nice to have you here, a trained, qualified individual to step right in and. Okay, we'll move on to item number two, consideration of ordinance, number 963, amending title 10. Chapter 15, parking, loading space, vehicular traffic, vehicle traffic and access of the Riverdale Municipal Code regarding residential parking calculations and restaurant drive-through standards. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you. We discussed this during the work session at a little more length, but the biggest changes that are noted are specifically the calculation for multifamily dwelling to two and one-fourths parking from one and three quarters. There's a change to the distance measurement in, in item H for two-family, three-family, four-family and multiple-family for visitor, guest parking to 150 feet from the measured linear distance from the near successful entranceway of each dwelling unit. Some changes to include fast food establishment and drive-through window stacking capacities. Just noting anything else, some very minor mechanical items that, that were added. And then the dates are showing 3/21. We originally were thinking of taking it to the city council on the 21st. So those, that date and obviously the number will be updated were this to be approved. The background for some of the changes of the Saratoga Springs parking ordinances specifically regarding their guest parking for two-family, three-family, multi-family uses. And then the only other thing I would note is that it did come before the planning commission with the public hearing on March 14th, 2023. We advertised in accordance with state code and city code for that public hearing. There are no comments during or before, and at the conclusion, a recommendation was made to city council approve. The code is found within your packet and I would defer to the city council for any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Any questions? Council Arnold.
Move to approve our ordinance 963 as stated within the packet.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say yes. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move on to item number three, discussion, direction and action concerning deadlines on building permits and water rights on new and grandfathered developments. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. As I explained in the, in the pre-planning meeting here, we've, we've run into a real weird, unique situation. But I, I, I just wanted the council to be informed of this. We, we're getting challenged more and more and more on, on all kinds of stuff in the code and it's usually little things. This is a one-word fix that we could have taken maybe two, but it's not clear. I mean, our code's getting a little bit older and some of those things just need to be updated. But a lot of times we don't find out about it until we're right in there. As our current code reads in 10255, it says failure to obtain a building permit within a year. And that's where this kicks into place. It doesn't say a building permit on the main building. It just says a building permit. And these guys came in and approached us initially and said, well, can we get a building permit to do excavation work? Which I guess a lot of cities do and we don't do that. So it wasn't an option. But then they proposed to us, well, can we get it on the, the garbage structure for this? Well, as I read that, it just says a building permit. It doesn't tell me it has to be on the main structure, which is how we would, we would amend this. It's just right now we're kind of stuck. And so my first thought is I don't know that I have much choice, but I wanted to at least bounce it off of you guys. I probably wouldn't even have been as concerned about it. I mean, I think it's a better deal for Riverdale anyway. I think the, the second project that they, they're proposing, how they've explained it to us and the fact that they're matching it up with the one across the street, I think is just better overall, I think, than what they had originally proposed. But if they did get the one building permit in, then it would lock them in where they, where they were at on both the, um, the water and the, um, the other deals that we're talking about here. They wouldn't have to start all over again and go through all that expense. So my intentions at this point, unless somebody had some real strong objections, would be to approve that and let them be on their way. And we anticipate we'd probably get that within a month or two anyway, but they're, they're close on it. They're just not close enough to get it done by the time their, their deadline's up. So that's kind of where I'm at. But I didn't want you guys thinking I was pulling some fast one on you and trying to play attorney here. I mean, I am playing attorney and that's how it reads, you know, unfortunately. So that's kind of what it is. But we will tweak this and bring that back into you. So that's clarified and we won't run into this in the future. Cause it's just, it's one of those things that's, we've never run into it before. And everybody's challenging us on some of the stupidest things, but sometimes they're right. Any questions on that? I will just plan on proceeding if, if there's no strong objections, but I, I don't think that was the original intent of it. I still don't think that, but it doesn't read that way. So.
Council Arnold.
What, what do they have at risk? I mean, the water for one, for sure, right?
They have to start over on everything. So all their fees and everything.
This new parking standard.
Right. And what kind of fees are we talking?
What they pay originally, Mike?
Cause they didn't pay it, right?
They what?
Part of the purchase price of what they're doing. So whoever, whoever sold them, whoever they bought it from is selling them.
This sat, yeah. This is Brad Brown that sat on this thing forever. He'd gotten this approved quite a while ago and then didn't do anything. It just stayed there. So then when they took it over, they inherited that. I don't think they were fully aware of how short that timeframe was. This is.
Yeah, let's make sure everybody understands.
Right Development Group.
Chris Hatch.
Chris Hatch, the one that's doing Leslie's.
They're partnered with Chris Hatch.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. It's the right, right development group would be the home builder, the apartment builder.
So the people who are doing Leslie's are also going to be doing north across the street.
Yes.
Which was going to be part of Stony Brook at one time. And then it, cause they the one, they're the ones who petitioned for the zone change. And then Brown, Mr. Brown came in. And so he, is Mr. Brown not in this?
No, he's gone now. He sold out to these guys, the, this current owners.
And the current owners is the same one who's doing Leslie's?
Correct. Well, I don't, I, there have been some negotiations going on for a while. They couldn't make it work and then they finally did. And by then Leslie's was already going forward and it was moving. And then they just got thinking, you know what? Let's just match it up so it all looks the same and, and we'll use, we'll cross-share the facilities.
Design of that high-rise, high-density 48-unit is, is from the Mr. Brown came in with, that's being set aside and something else.
The footprint would match, but the uses inside the building don't match. So there, there have been building plans drawn up for 48 units for the same footprint. They want to rework the internal workings of the same footprint for two and three bedroom uses. So you'd have fewer units in that same footprint.
And then, you know, colors and all that kind of stuff would match now. So it'd be kind of neat.
That's the other thing. They will, they will do an update designer view committee request to match what's going on with their other planning. So that is also, so it'll look all cohesive. That is their intent.
I think that's great, but on the other side of this, people can change it too. I mean, they're coming in saying, hey, this is going to be good for Riverdale. It's going to look better. That whole area is going to look better. But they sell to say, we're approving something that could possibly be different than that. I mean, you know, it, I, I just think it's, uh, I don't think Brad Brown should be able to buy something, petition, and it's probably petitioned before, like Bart was saying with Stony Brook. It was the Stony Brook McDonald House or whatever for people to be able to stay there. And then, you know, it changed to one-bedroom apartments and now it's changing this other one. And yet they're, they're preserving the rights to opt out of the parking, opt out of the water. Even those, I don't know what the, the numbers that Sean's would do with that and saying, who, how many are going to live there? What, what's the calculation of 48 one-bedroom apartments calculates different than what this is? And they're just kind of, they're working that system because we're allowing them to win. We should, I mean, I think they should be coming in and saying, hey, we're changing the whole thing.
Well, they, and they haven't had, hid that from us. I mean, they've been really open about it, you know? Right. And it's not really an opt-out. All they're doing is locking in their grandfathering rights is what they're doing. So it's just, I'd probably do the same thing if I was on their, their boat as well. So I don't know.
Let me ask you a question. So if we did make them start over, could we get something worse? I mean, I, I can't, is, what's a zone? I'm just, I'm just throwing this out there. So could they build something bigger or do something? I, I'm just at, just throwing this out there. Could we get a, if they're like, okay, well, if we're going to put all this money and put all this effort into it, maybe we will just redo. Could we end up with worse product? I'm just.
It could probably go higher, couldn't it? Cause they're only talking to three stories, so it could go up. Right there. That would be overshadowing Stony Brook. Right?
Really, they could go that high?
Parking garage, underground parking, I don't know.
Okay, I'm just, just asking like.
Should be on the record, but every, everything's back on the table, I guess, to some extent. I mean, every, everything's obviously, we're, we're right back looking at how the codes apply with the new perspective moving forward from that date that they would reapply, right? And how the codes apply at that point, whereas this is a snapshot 18 months ago, right? But that's kind of, so you have to look at, are we, how do we want to proceed with it? Are we comfortable with that same footprint and that same site plan that was previously approved? Are we saying no? And what does that then look like with the new ordinances that have evolved since that time? And where does that take, take that site?
I think they look at it more as a selling point if they can match that up with the two across and, and the cross-access and use of the facilities. They're looking at that as, you know, we can sell those ones across the street or at least rent those a lot easier if we have access to those things. So they want them to match. That was their whole intent.
So what do we need? I mean.
Nothing.
I mean, just.
I just would proceed just with that interpretation unless I had some real strong objections. So. And I'm not hearing any, so that's how we'll proceed. We'll be in contact with them tomorrow. Thank you. I appreciate that. And we will, we will begin that other process.
I don't think so. It's not, don't even say it's a consensus. He just wanted to discuss.
Yeah, because it's just an interpretation of the code, which is what we had already talked about. So.
So are you going to clean up the code?
Yes, that'll be, we'll start that here right away.
In fact, if you remember at strategic planning meeting with the, all that legislative stuff I brought forward, all that fun stuff. This is the year we're updating our general plan, which will have implications on our code anyway. But obviously with all the new state legislation, there's going to be a lot more up, code updates. I mean, I have to, I have to add a brand-new airport overlay zone in two different distinct areas of the city and bring that forward. There's going to be some pretty serious overhauls of title 10 coming. So this will be an easy one to add everything in the kitchen sink type of a thing to everything else that's coming.
Okay. We will move on to agenda item H, comments. Are there any comments from the city council for this meeting? Okay, any comments from the city staff?
Didn't, didn't you want to address something?
So this kind of relates back to what you heard on open discussion earlier. So we have money in there to redo that playground that she was talking about down there. And everything that we've looked at that's somewhat decent is way above budget for what we have. So I guess what I'm asking is for some direction. And we can't make a decision tonight because it involves funds and that. But do you want to see something smaller there than what we have to stay in the budget? Or do you want us to bring something back that's at least as nice or nicer and look at some different funding? It's the main playground at Riverdale Park.
We always refer to it as upper and lower.
Lower Riverdale, the bigger part of lowered Riverdale. This is the bigger one of the two. About 220.
Yeah, or a year out.
So sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. If you go down the road that she was speaking of, I mean, we always try and incorporate some of that into it on a limited basis. When you start going to an all-access, you start talking about a surface that's different than what we've typically done. So you're not going to use like the five-bar mulch. You're going to have a hard surface and frankly, the tickets that we've seen on them lately, you're talking a whole different ballgame of funding. And that, that's just something you'd have to decide if you want to do that and how long you're, you want to try and fundraise or grant raise to do something like that. In other communities, it's kind of been spearheaded by a person. They've kind of taken that on and ran with it and came back with something. But we're just looking for some guidance for right now on how you want us to proceed. I, I mean, it's by far our heaviest-use park and it's, it's in need of some upgrades. You know, that's why we budgeted for it. It's just kind of shocking what the market's done in two years to us. So.
What was the term she used?
All access. All abilities.
Microphone, microphone.
Microphone.
They're super expensive, but I know one of them, I think we did out of pocket. The other one, they're, because of the location, um, the playground company did a portion of it. Donated a portion because it became an area, like she said. But it does take a lot of extra staff time. If, it does help when there's someone in the community that, that helps with tracking down grants and getting people involved and engaged. And really, for what she's talking about, I don't think that area would be big enough. I was imagining that she was thinking we would do it over by where the volleyball net is. And build something actually substantial for the kids, but.
The other thing that comes into play is there are going to be a regional draw.
Right.
We already hear a lot back about what the Splashpad's done to Riverdale citizens, Riverdale Park. And so you, you have to take that into consideration. Do we have the parking there for that? And how, how much more crowded do you want it to be than it already is? But I'm glad you guys get to make that decision, and we can just do what you tell us to do. So.
But if you were just replacing what's there with something similar, is that within the budget?
No.
No, not even that.
It probably wouldn't even be what we have there now.
Really?
Council Arnold.
I, I think we should delay it. Talk, see if we can do a ramp grant and talk to the school district. Community partners, businesses, whatever. If we can get her, other people that will volunteer and create a committee to try and create this, I think even a regional park or whatever. I mean, I'm not a fan of the Splashpad anyway. I mean, everybody knows that, but, but to, to create something like this somewhere and actually say, you know, we have two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to put towards it, even if we got matching funds from somewhere, something, I mean, we're at least showing up with something that we have in the budget that we can show up for right now. And, and we put it off until we get, and, and again, just reach out to her and anybody else that's, you know, really passionate about this and see if we can create a committee that might go after this.
The, the biggest concern I have with that, and I don't disagree with any of that, is the age on that playground right now. I'm putting a lot of wear and tear into it, a lot of maintenance into it. I can't hold off for five years. You know, I can't wait four years, three years. We really need to do something in the next couple of years. We want to build in the off-season because naturally you don't want to have that park down during the summer. That would be a nightmare to be trying to build there in the summer. So.
Put a timeline on it for the winter of twenty-four? Would that be where you'd be looking?
So that's what we would, was going to propose anyway, is that we would, we'd roll the money over and not do anything until fall. But the problem is, is like you're needing to be ordering equipment within the next two months if you want to build in twenty twenty-four because of lead times. A lot of the lead times now are six months. So. I mean, we have time to talk about it again, but we kind of need to hurry as well too. And, and I don't know if that type of playground fits over there. I mean, if it's on a, like she's talking about these huge playgrounds. If you've seen them, like, they're not something small. These are probably three-quarters of million-dollar playgrounds.
Maybe she's just interested in a few extra features.
That's what I got out of it a little bit.
And that's what I'm, but, but if she does, if you do a total all-abilities, you know, that, that's a whole different ballgame than what Riverdale's done.
The one I saw for, uh, Weaver School District, I mean, it, it basically had the rubber mat finish or surface. I mean, people are falling, not getting hurt type of thing. I mean, it was, it was a full-blown, I mean, literally all-access type of thing. So.
So sometimes that, just that surface alone, you could be talking, depending on the size, you might be talking a hundred thousand dollars just for that surface.
And the maintenance is a lot higher.
And the maintenance is totally different. So if you have somebody coming there and they drop something on it, it burns. Um, when they first put that down, everybody was all over it. Now the people that have had that down for a while, they're like, this isn't what it was sold to us as. The maintenance isn't as easy. She probably has, you know, I don't have experience with it. I'm just hearing from other people. She, it sounds like she's had experience with it.
It's kind of almost like a, when you do the rock overlay on the roads, you have to go in and lay down this glue and then try to get stuff to stick to it when you do the maintenance on it. It's a huge, it can be a mess. I'm sure it's improved in the three years that I haven't been in, in city government, but.
We haven't heard a lot of great improvements.
Yeah, it, it was really hard to keep clean. Like, it just blew everywhere. And, yeah, it was, it was.
We talked about a little bit with them when we was pricing this playground, and even the manufacturers, like, well, you're going to be in a different realm with this, you know? You're, you're not taking on what you previously.
Have to be committed to it, yeah.
Um, just, so some direction now is just to kind of hold on that, and we'll just bring up some stuff and talk about it in the future then.
You were planning to do some replacement on that lower parking or playground anyway. What was your timeline? Was it?
So we've been working on this since last fall, but everything anymore, like, anything we try and do, I mean, the chiefs, the trucks, like, we, we've had trucks on order now for two years, and it's just crazy how long the lead times are. So it's, either way, even if we would have fit in the budget, we would have been asking to roll it over probably just to get the equipment here. So.
All right, all right. So, I mean, really, in realist reality, twenty-four is be the earliest you could be.
Either way, we wouldn't happen this summer because I'm not going to.
Even roll to twenty-five.
The only concern with that is, you know, that equipment's aging and we're putting, you know, if we put another ten or twenty thousand dollars into them slides, that's kind of wasted money if you're putting up a new playground. So. But, yeah.
Mr. Brooks.
I don't, I don't know that it comes into play or even makes any difference, but I reached out to Superintendent Butters, um, after we had that last meeting and discussed that. She got right back to me through an email, and I kind of hinted saying, you know, we could be taking up part of that park and different things, not that we know, but, um, just so she was aware of that. And she jumped right on and got back to me, said, I'm getting my facilities. People will be in touch with you. And I haven't heard anything, but they do know, and I do have a tentative meeting set up. I just haven't heard from them. But I'm hoping, and I told her, we kind of need to know what your plans and projected, projections are, so we know what we're doing. And she didn't seem to oppose to it. So maybe we'll know more when I meet. I have no idea. But, I mean, we got to do that anyway, but, uh, it would be good to know. But I, I know that's a different playground, but I, I don't know what it would lead to. We'll just, we'll just play it by ear. But just so you know, we, we have reached out to them.
And we always talk about this, but we still have this area down here that probably would be a good fit for, for a playground that maybe doesn't affect the community as far as if you bring a bunch more people in as much.
Yeah.
Just a thought, you know, you could do something down there.
More time to come up with a plan.
So, it's true. And that, that's, that's exactly right. That could buy all of us some time. And.
Way more parking.
I think she's, uh, I think she could be motivated, and, uh, I think the businesses could get on board. And, and you, you, sometimes you underestimate what people could do, you know? And so, so I don't know. But, uh, I, I think it's interesting, the thought of maybe doing something down here, maybe not the whole playground, but part of it all. I don't know how those work, but, uh.
So if you remember when we put the committee together to do on the seventeen acres?
Yeah.
That was one of their key features, was a nice playground. I mean, from, from what I remember, everything they talked about, we don't want dedicated place places, but we want areas where people can go play pickup games or whatever, and we want a nice playground, pavilion, that type of thing. So if you bring that kind of theory across the street, I think the playground's huge for the community. And I, I think it's good to include every peop- everybody that we can, as long as we can afford to do it and we can maintain it. So.
And I know Council Arnold's in big favor of these parks we're talking about. That, that's the only thing he likes less than the Splashpad, I think. So. I'm just giving you a hard time. Okay, good discussion. Um, any other comments from the city staff? Okay. Uh, I don't have any comments for this meeting. So, um, at this point, we would need a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned. Okay, um, we will move into our RDA meeting. Um, let's see. So who needs to stay for that?
Whoever you want to stay, I guess. Really? Yeah, it's closed session, so it'd normally just be your, your board, but.
Yeah. That's fine. I mean, whoever you think would benefit from being in the closed session, I'm.
Mike's aware of it. I, none of this is new to, to some of us. Anyway, this is what we've been working on for a while, but, uh.
I'm sure a lot of them would just as soon go home, um, and I would just as soon have them be home with their families if they would like. So.
I, my biggest concern is just that I have non-disclosure agreements if anybody stays. So.
So if we do excuse, does Shaila need to stay or?
We, we have to record this where it's not a personnel issue.
Right.
But, uh, she doesn't necessarily, necessarily have to stay. I told her she could take off as soon as we got done with this, so that she didn't have to stay for all that training and stuff. So.
Okay, so we'll just do the RDA real quick and then she can get out of here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I, I wouldn't have a problem with it, as long as you sign me an agreement. How's that?
Mark the strategic planning part?
Yeah, just staying tight. This is going to be fast. So.
I think you just put your information right here. You're part of Riverdale, so you sign, print your name, your title.
I do.
Have an extra piece right here.
All right, I'm going to get started here. Um, so we can fly through this. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Riverdale City RDA Board Meeting for Tuesday, April fourth, twenty twenty-three. Let the record show, all members of the RDA Board are present, as well as members of the city staff. Um, we don't have any members of the public here, so we want to have any public comment, presentations, consent items. We do have an action item. Number one, consideration to adjourn into a closed executive session pursuant to Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five, purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. Uh, do we have a motion to go into a closed session? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Nay, will you please poll the board?
Word member Merrill?
Yes.
Word member Hilton?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, microphone's off. Cam?